Good evening, and welcome to the Thousand Oaks Planning Commission Meeting of October 23rd, 2017. I ask at this time that you please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner McMahon?
Here.
Commissioner Nichols?
Yes.
Commissioner Pletcher?
Here.
Commissioner Lanson? Absent. And Chair Newman?
This is the public comments period of our meeting where members of the public are invited to address the commission on issues that are within the commission's purview but not on the agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. We have one speaker card this evening, Mr. Nick Kidway. Good evening. And as usual, we ask that you please state your name and city of residence.
Nick Egbal Kidway, resident of Newberry Park, Director of Concerns, City of Thousand Oaks, and yeah, residence since 79 or 77, whichever you take. In fact, I was reading the minutes of tomorrow's council meeting regarding the lots, and lo and behold, beautiful American minutes, not the North Korean minutes that we get now where just the name of the taxpayer is mentioned. Not only is a comment elucidated, elucidated, or opined, whatever it's want to say in the minutes, but even their street addresses there, which we don't need. So chopped off everything, so now all you get is names, so you don't even know, in fact, you don't even know the position that the people have taken. Well, I should really be upset, and I am upset, is that the staff paid all the money, having all the education, come back, come back, come to us after 20 years and say we have never taken inventory of what the number of lots that are available are left. I mean, if you did that in the private sector, your head would be chopped off, I mean. And then we have the paper saying that, well, even though on papers, 5,000 units, 5,000 more homes that can be built, but they can't be built because everybody says there's no dirt around. How stupid it is, the people are. I mean, if you go to just the Valley, Studio City, West Hollywood, Palo Alto, I mean, in fact, in our city also, there are homes on the ridges. What is stopping building them? It's the ordinance and you folks that are sitting here. We'll take that away. Then the other thing is maybe some, their hillsides are steep, so maybe it will take a lot of money, but that has been reached already because these homes, lots are $1 million a piece. Four units on Hampshire Road sold for $4 million, and he's going to keep it the same way. In fact, I just drove past, just before Lupi's, there was, there is a industry, there is a retail center that was built about, I don't know, five, seven years ago, and guess what? For one year, they were constantly blasting. And they did not anticipate it, but I just noticed that they have a problem in the parking in the back, and so they were able to just do enough blasting to be able to make a project feasible economically, but it did cost over $1 million of wasted money, but they had to do it because of nature. And so if the people want it, or the developers want it, they can build it, and that's why it is very sad that the city has gone backwards. The development report that used to be on the agenda, it used to be discussed by the chairman and the other people, so we knew what was coming, what was happening to in our city. I just got notification, thanks to Twitter, from Clint Matkovic, he's an activist, about the buildings in Newberry Park, which is very close to my home. So I decided even just at sunset to go, and I took some pictures. Half a million square feet of industrial has been built, and it just came up, and the, what is it? The work, I mean, I can't speak anymore, I'm getting old. The people who build and cut the dirt and all that, they are so fast and efficient that they can, they have put up tilt-ups. So the tilt-up, I mean, the whole walls like this, this was built by tilt-up, which would take two months, would take two days to stand up. And so before you know it, the damage is done, and the damage has been done on the Caneo grade because that senior center, we never knew that it would take so much of the viewshed. All the discussion was in the back about, about, about the hill, but nobody realized it because unless you see it, you can't say anything about it. And that's why the city already has a wonderful video machine. You should take videos of all the projects and show them here so that you, the commissioners can see it as well as all people. Thank you for letting me speak, have a wonderful day. Oh, just a second. If TOTV can just show that, if, I forgot, this is, I've been talking about it, this is, these are the things that we should be concerned about, this is from yesterday's LA time. If we have an earthquake, which we will have, we have a big fart, this is what the city should be preparing for. Thank you.
Thank you. We move now to written comments, announcements, and contingencies. Mr. Gilly?
The only, the only announcement, Mr. Chair, is that we have an email for item 6B that was provided to you under, under a supplemental packet, and that is all for now.
All right, thanks very much. We move now to our two cases this evening, one of which I believe is a continuance, case 6A. Will the clerk please call case 6A?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6A regarding case DPMJ 2016-70412. Applicant Lexus Topa Motors, Inc. Request to amend Condition Number 33 of DPMN 2013-70534 to allow light standards to remain on rooftop of a newly-built auto dealership. Location: 3755 Auto Mall Drive.
Thank you. Ms. Gilly?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The applicant requests a continuance of this hearing to the meeting of December 4th, 2017, and staff is supportive of that request.
And does this request require a vote of the commission?
I think my recommendation would be that you just vote on a motion to continue to that specific date, just to ensure.
Do we need a motion to have that vote?
Yeah, just go ahead and do a motion.
Okay, I'm just administratively, I will make the motion to recommend the continuance of DPMJ 2016-70412. Will the clerk please set us up for a vote?
Motion passed, 4-0.
All right, moving on to case 6B. Will the clerk please call that case?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6B regarding case MCA 2017-70260. Applicant: City of Thousand Oaks. Request to amend the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code to establish zoning classification and regulatory regulations for up to one cannabis retailer, medical, and up to one cannabis testing facility within an industrial-zoned area, and repealing Title IX, Chapter 44 in its entirety. Location: Citywide.
Thank you. And presenting on behalf of staff this evening, Mr. Ware. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Newman and Plant Commissioners. Stated tonight before you is MCA 2017-70260 regarding cannabis. The applicant is the City of Thousand Oaks. Tonight's request is to approve a resolution, excuse me, recommending approval of the amendment to the City Council. As a little background of history on the state level, in October 2015, the State of California adopted the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act that established a legislative framework for commercial aspects of medical cannabis. It allowed the cities to ban any or all aspects of commercial cannabis, and also allowed, at that point in time, the city to ban personal cultivation. In November 2016, the voters of California passed Proposition 64, or the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, commonly referred to as AMA, that allowed for possession and use of non-medical marijuana. And it also created a legislative framework for the commercial, non-medical aspects. It also allowed, at that point in time, the cities to ban the commercial portion similar to the Medical Act, but it also preempted cities from totally banning personal cultivation and allowed cultivation up to six plants, and I'll go into that just a little bit in the further, in a few minutes. In March 2017, the State of California actually repealed the Medical Act and kind of merged a lot of those aspects into what was AMA, creating the Medicinal and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, commonly referred to now as MALCURSA. Still allowed the city to ban and regulate commercial activities for both medical and non-medical cannabis. And with that, we got into a series of, over those years, also city action. In January of 2016, the City Council, in response to the adoption of the Medical Act, adopted an amendment prohibiting all commercial activities and also personal cultivation of cannabis. At that time, we were allowed to ban all commercial, or I'm sorry, all personal cultivation. In December 2016 and March of 2017, in response to the passing of AMA, the City Council adopted ordinances kind of extending the commercial bans, prohibitions for commercial activities of cannabis for both medical and non-medical cannabis. It also, as required by AMA, created a restriction for the cultivation of six plants, and it was allowed within residential buildings and accessory residential buildings. In 2017, after conducting some significant public outreach on the subject, the City Council started moving forward with initiating this amendment. The outreach included a series of surveys, including questions that were included on the 2017 Community Attitude Survey, and that survey is actually considered statistically valid. They also conducted a public workshop at a council meeting, which council received extensive information on the subject as far as state law and what cities could actually do in the form of legislation. As I said, led the City Council to formally initiate this amendment on July, in July of 2017. In council's initiation, two major points were actually included in that. One is that it would be the initiation and the amendment would be drafted allowing one medical retailer and one testing laboratory, and that these facilities would be located in an industrial zone. The portion of the, or the amendment that's in front of you this evening for recommendation has two basic parts. One is amending the land use matrix to incorporate medical cannabis retailer and cannabis testing laboratory under the M1 zoning classification, and the second would be to repeal the current prohibitions and standards in the zoning ordinance for commercial cannabis and also personal cultivation. And those will be later relocating the code into the Title V with the entire ordinance. This map shows some of the areas that are, that are industrial-zoned. Primarily, the larger areas are the Rancho Caneo Industrial Area, which is in this location here. It also includes specific Plan 15, which that designation includes all M1 zone uses. Another larger area is over here, which is kind of bordered by Hampshire Road 101 and Westlake Boulevard. There's some smaller areas further down towards the LA County, Ventura County line between Thousand Oaks Boulevard and 101. There's a small area here in the Caneo Ridge area along Willow Lane, I'm sorry, Caneo Ridge, Willow Lane area, just down the block from us here. And also, there's some areas along 101, on both sides of 101, really to the west of Camino Dos Rios and Wendy, Wendy Drive in Newberry Park. The proposed amendment does designate these two uses, the medical cannabis retailer and the testing lab in the M1 zone. And just as a side note, a medical cannabis retailer was previously referred to as a dispensary, and they, in the most recent amendments, they changed those names to retailers. In the M1 zone, some of the traits of this that would be consistent is these types of, in regards to the retailer, these types of uses have a warehouse element, which is consistent with the M1 zoning. Although it's called a retailer, it won't have general retail-type sales. The sales will be limited to cannabis and cannabis-related products. There won't be tobacco sales out of these facilities, and there won't be other types of retail items sold. Customers are required to have an appointment and will not allow walk-ins. And there will also be other types of significant regulations imposed as part of the regulatory permit that will be included in another area of the code. In regards to the testing laboratory, medical and dental laboratories are currently already allowed in the M1 zone, and this is consistent with that use. And again, there'll be other regulations imposed as part of the other aspects of the ordinance, not, not under the general guidance of a zoning amendment. Another portion of this ordinance, again, deals with the prohibitions that are currently in the zoning ordinance related to commercial prohibitions and also personal cultivation. This portion of amendment would repeal those aspects out of the zoning ordinance, and they will also be placed, those parts that are pertinent will be placed in the regulatory side, and there's no anticipated changes to the restrictions currently imposed upon residential and personal cultivation. Staff recommends that the Plant Commission approve a resolution recommending that the City Council adopt MCA 2017-70260 based on the findings contained in the draft resolution and ordinance. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ware. Commissioners, are there questions of staff? Commissioner Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Ware, for that brief review of marijuana history in the city of Thousand Oaks. I just would like to clarify and make sure, because I know you've covered a lot of territory as far as the breadth of what's before the city, a lot of it has regulatory issues. But as far as the purpose of this hearing tonight and the charge before this commission, there's no regulatory issues at all. This is strictly a zoning issue as to which industrial area, per request and direction of City Council, that these activities should take place. Is that correct?
That is correct. No regulatory aspects are involved with tonight's request. It is strictly a zoning question about whether this is appropriate for the M1 zone.
Okay, thank you. With that, appreciating the staff report, the recommendation is to focus on the M1 zoning, and looking at the map of the M1 and M2, by far and away, the M1 zone is, covers most of that territory. M2 just has a small area. But I didn't see anything in your report as to what distinguishes really between M1 and N2, and why you're recommending M1. Could you perhaps spell that out a little bit more?
M1 is, you know, light industrial parks, as compared to the M2 that has a little more manufacturing aspects. Our M2 land in Thousand Oaks is very small, as noted in that map. There's only a couple small areas. The M1 zone being kind of a light industrial park is, we feel was more appropriate based on the classifications that are already within those zones, and specifically in the area of the medical labs. It's already in there, and there's more M1 zone available. Also, it's anticipated that going down the regulatory side where there'll be some concentration, I'm sorry, not concentration, some sensitive land uses, the M2 may not be available when those things are figured into the picture, and the M1 would be. So from our aspect, the M1 zone is the appropriate zone based on the types of uses that are allowed already in the M1 zone, that this would be consistent and not with the regulations that would be imposed also, would not be, have any negative impact within the M1 zone. And also, it's just based on the availability within that under what we, we believe the ordinances will be that council adopts. It's really the only choice if it's going to be industrials-owned.
Okay, thank you. And then, did I hear you correctly that you're indicating that while you didn't have a full list of all the allowable uses, that medical activity is a allowable use within, currently allowable use within the M1 zone?
It is. Medical, medical, on the retailer's side, medical uses are allowed in the M1 zone already. Currently, it would be with a special use permit, but as, this will not include a special use, but there will be a permit that's located elsewhere in the municipal code that would be very like having a special use permit, so the regulations will be imposed and conditions will be imposed upon that. But otherwise, yes, medical use is already allowed in the M1 zone.
And am I remembering correctly that we do have such things as outpatient surgery centers and medical offices and research facilities within that zone? Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
On page four of Attachment 1, there's a quick little table of zoning classifications and indicates, the first one there is industrial uses, and then the second one, medical care uses. Is that reference to medical care uses, just what we are describing as the types of activities that are currently there, and that this, that the cannabis retailer medical would be added to that list?
Correct. Those two classifications that would be in that chart, those main headings, I should say, industrial uses, medical care uses, are presently in the matrix as we sit here today. That's not being, the only thing being added would be the double underlined area of that chart, the cannabis testing laboratories, and the cannabis retailer medical would be entered under those already established classifications. Correct.
Okay, and though it says here DP, which I presume is development permit required, is that?
The DP refers to the building, that, any building that would be built within that M1 zone still requires a development permit. We don't require a separate development permit for the uses that would come under there, but the building itself would require development permit, it has to go through the development process, or architectural, and all sorts, of course, all sorts of things as that. So when we enter uses like this, it's entered into the fact that those buildings that they go into, mind you, this might go into a standalone building, it might go to a multi-tenant building, depending on what it is, those buildings themselves have to be approved under, at a minimum, a DP.
So that would go to the structure, would need that development permit?
Correct.
And then the tenant would have to have that specific permit as well?
The regulatory permit, correct.
Regulatory permit?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's it for now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Pletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your report, Mr. Ware. Just real quick, at this stage, based on your presentation, the regulatory element really isn't considered tonight, but was there any consideration based on the map given to regulatory aspects at this stage in making staff's recommendation for the M1? Because I know, I mean, just, I noticed when you pull up the map, there are a number of schools near that zoning, there, I know there's a number of houses. Just in your comparison between M1 and M2, where there doesn't seem to be like a whole lot of extra facilities near there, any consideration given at this stage, or is all that going to be really considered later when council gets to the regulatory aspects of this?
It will be considered later. There are actually some state mandated separations from certain sensitive land uses, and the staff is looking to, at that specific, whether we'll recommend differently than the existing state regulations, but that will be included in the regulatory side.
Okay, perfect. That's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do have a few questions as well. With regard to the regulatory matters, we've discussed already that the City Council would have some jurisdiction over that. Are there any other bodies that have a say on the regulatory side for either facility?
Yes. The way, the way the, what would be MALCURSA now, the Medical and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, the way that is actually established is, there's kind of a dual licensing procedure that exists for those types of facilities. One at the local level, which would be the City of Thousand Oaks, one at the state level. Prior to applying at the state level for any of these, they have to show they have local approval. So there, so yes, another agency, yes, it would be the State of California under various jurisdictions of the State of California, depending on what type of license it is. There's, there's a multitude of licensing under different classifications. The only one the City Council has moved forward with in this initiation would be the testing lab and the medical retailer, or the medical cannabis retailer. So there would be two licensing agencies, well, two levels of government that would be licensing agencies, and one at the local level and one at the state level also.
Okay, so just so I'm clear on that, I think, if I'm understanding correctly, both the city and the state would be licensing both the dispensary and the testing facility? Is that, are those statements correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Thanks for clearing that up. The report says that in the dispensary, all items sold to patients with appropriate medical recommendations. My question is, who would be entitled to make those appropriate medical recommendations? Is it someone at either of these facilities, or is it any physician, or?
No, it would have to be, it is a physician, yes. Would it be at these facilities? The answer would be no. They have to be, they will be separated from the facility, so they would have to get a recommendation from an off-site source before they do it. So, so no, would not be contained in any of, any of these facilities. Well, the testing lab itself is separate, they wouldn't be doing any of that, they're just testing product. In the retailer aspect, they would be getting a recommendation from a physician that's not part of that facility, and not, not within that facility.
All right. Is it, outside of the facility, though, is it any EGP? I mean, could any physician, could our family doctor make that recommendation?
I believe so. I wouldn't necessarily be an expert in that aspect of it, but generally, I believe the answer to that question would be yes.
Okay. I need to be careful with my personal pronouns. I'm not asking, not asking for a friend or for myself. I'd also like to understand the relationship between the dispensary and the testing facility, namely whether, I realize this is out of our purview, but just, just so I understand how this will work, are the products sold at the dispensary, will they be required to be, have been tested at the local facility?
No. The testing, the testing lab would be able to test product in general, actually for both the medicinal and the, and the non-medicinal purposes. By state law, those have to be separate and distinct, they may not have a relationship together. together. And the local, the local retailer may or may not get their product from, that's tested from a local, you know, it depends, it may be, but they are separate facilities, they have separate ownership, they have separate licensing, both at the local level and the state level. And in the case of the testing lab, there's specific requirements that the testing labs have to be separate from any other licensee.
I understand. So you're saying the dispensary may be a customer of the facility, but doesn't have to be, and the same is true vice versa?
Can you restate that one again?
The dispensary can only sell products that have been certified by a testing facility, correct?
That is true, in general state law, there's also, there is a temporary provision as a state creates its own rules under this, that there's a short period of time where the state may allow untested as long as it's marked appropriately. But in the long term, correct, the medical retailer would have to sell product that was tested by state, by state law.
Okay, but essentially, these are two standalone businesses. The dispensary may get its products tested at this local Thousand Oaks testing facility.
It doesn't work exactly as a direct relationship between the two, there's other licensed categories that would, for better terms, distribute this, it wouldn't necessarily go, I believe, straight from the lab. The lab would only be testing samples that are held by another party and then when certified, eventually it will make its way to the retailer, which is kind of an end user type license.
Okay, so if there is a relationship, it would be indirect?
Correct.
Right, okay. Thank you for clearing that up. The staff report also says that the language regarding personal cultivation will be moved to Title V of the municipal code.
Correct.
Am I correct in presuming that no zoning change is required around that?
Other than noting the repeal out of the zoning ordinance, correct?
Yeah. All right. That's all the questions I have. Commissioner Nichols, I think, has some additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Ware, I just wanted to clarify, or ask for your clarification, why is it that specific Plan 15 is specifically called out in the report as opposed to any other specific plans that may cross over some of these industrial zones?
Well, in the case of specific Plan 15, it, as part of that specific plan adoption, it allows all M1 uses. So it has a M1 designation to that specific plan area. So anything within that specific plan area automatically accepts M1 uses. So that's why it acts as an M1 zone in all retrospect.
Okay, all right, thank you. That was it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, commissioners, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Ware. Not hearing any other questions of commissioners, we move now to public comments. We have two speaker cards, and if anyone else wishes to speak, please see the clerk and fill out one of these beige colored cards. Our two speakers this evening will have five minutes apiece, and they are Joe Kyle and then Nick Kidway. We ask that you come to the podium and for the record, please state your name and city of residence. Good evening.
So, there we go. Good evening, hello Planning Commission, city staff, my name is Joe Kyle, I'm resident of Thousand Oaks. I created the Thousand Oaks Medical Marijuana Outreach in January 2016 after the city council banned all medical cannabis commercial activities. Since January 2016, the city has opened the conversation with its citizens and asked them for what they would like to see within this great city. Although I do applaud the city staff for asking their constituents what they want, I feel the wording of the questions enabled what we now see unfolding to occur. The question about dispensaries in the 2017 Community Attitude Survey asked if citizens could see a limited amount of dispensaries within the city. Why not have the questions ask if citizens could see a medical dispensary within their city, followed by a range of numbers? The Community Attitude Survey had multiple other questions with this type of format. The commercial cultivation question seemed like it was written to confuse citizens, the exact question asked about commercial cultivation on private property. This wording could confuse voters into thinking commercial cultivation would be allowed within a residence. Adding the words "in commercial" or "industrial zones" would have calmed those concerns. I have only seen one ordinance in all of California that has allowed commercial cultivation in residential, and that was residential rural. All of this is beside the point as we are only talking about a single medical cannabis dispensary and testing lab. Please consider the size of this city when thinking about how many dispensaries this city will allow. In a city of 130,000 people, even if only 3% of the population are medical cannabis users, that is 3,900 people, that is only taken into account the patients based within this city, not to mention the amount of people that will be coming into other cities from outside ours. Asking if all of these people to go into one location will potentially have negative effects to the surrounding areas, giving these citizens more options will also diversify the type of products available to customers. No two dispensaries are exactly the same, from the look of it down to the product they carry. There are many different forms of medical cannabis and many different brands, not all stores carry the same brands, just like some people shop at Albertson's, some at Von's, and some at Smart and Final. I understand the Planning Commission job tonight is only, is only to decide on zoning of these dispensaries and testing labs. We ask that the conversation be had to not allow for a locally mandated monopoly separate from the decisions you make here tonight. If this, if this city moves onward with only one dispensary, we ask that the city's Planning Commission and city council would allow for permanent delivery services based outside the city to deliver to patients based in the city. This would allow patients that may not be able to get out of the house or pay someone to get the medicine for them to not only have one local option. Once again, we understand this is not what the, is not what the Planning Commission is talking about tonight, but we ask that this is included in the direction if it can be. And I can answer any questions anyone may have, thank you very much for your time and consideration. And just, I got another two minutes here, so to comment real quick on the recommendations, you have to go to your acting physician basically and legal entities, legal recommendations such as Canamet in here in Thousand Oaks, people think that may be a dispensary, it's not, it's where you go and get your doctor's recommendations. And they make it so you have to actually bring in your physical doctor records of you complaining of that ailment, just a prescription does not work. And then you see the FaceTime doctors that are still out there, the California Board, Medical Board has commented and said that all FaceTime doctors, they're going to go away because it's a sham, we know it's a sham. And so it's going to go to the point that they're going to look into how many people the doctors are seeing a day and ensure that it's enough time that they can actually give a physical to those patients and not be just a mill just pumping out. So, thank you.
Thank you. Before you, before you go, Mr. Kyle, I think there are a couple of questions for you. Commissioner Pletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your comments, sir. Just curious, you had mentioned in your hypothetical, I think it was 3,500 or 3,900 people. So what, in your view, is an ideal number of how many we should have? More than one would suffice for you or?
At the city council meeting, we asked for a minimum of three, but realistically two, you know, even just to diversify the product and spread those patients to more than one location.
And in your view, outside of our, the confines of this discussion tonight, you would like to see it outside of the M1 zone, are you comfortable with the M1, M2 industrial zone?
I, for just safety sake, would like to see in commercial where other areas are, but with that, this Planning Commission and council could make it so, you know, let's face it, nobody wants it on the boulevard, you know, certain areas, maybe other areas of the boulevard, we can decide that and designate exactly where we want it.
Okay. I just wanted to get a, you know, I like to get a sense of where the entire community's at, so I, again, I appreciate you coming and speaking tonight, thank you.
And Mr. Kyle, I also appreciate you coming in to give your comments and also for acknowledging that there are regulatory and other issues that are outside the scope of what's before us tonight. So thank you for recognizing that there, there are many things that we can't do tonight. I would like some clarification, on your speaker card, there's a generic form that says a speaker is either for or opposed to something, and you checked both. I think from the context of your comments, you're not really saying you're for or against the motion or the recommendation before us tonight, that you'd like some other things to be modified.
Exactly.
Is that an accurate reading of your comments?
Yes, 100%.
Okay, all right. Thanks very much again, appreciate it.
Thank you.
The other public speaker card we have is from Mr. Nick Kidway, and you have five minutes. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Newman, Nick Akbal, Kidway, resident of Newberry Park. I was not going to speak on this issue because I don't have a dog in the race and just decided to stay on and then I heard M1 and that brought up my ears. First of all, I'd like to say that people like the Honorable Laurie Robinson who has written, and I feel sorry for the loss of her son, is that, I guess it can be said to me also, but to complain to the Planning Commission and ask them about how bad this thing is and to kill it, et cetera, when it's not in the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission or the city, it would be better, the energies would be spent better if other things are done like not having too strong pot or having it lead to other drugs, that's what we don't want. And that's what happens when it's done under the table. I went to pick up a customer in Reseda last week, and, well, he was an air conditioning contractor, and he started talking to me going to home. The house, if I can call that a house, that he was working in and they were working in all day, every day, is just chock full of marijuana pots and electric bulbs and air conditioning, and that's his job. And they have three or four people, all day, that's what they do in Reseda. I don't want to report them, but I understand that this is not legal yet, but this is going on, and this will go on even without it. So the only thing is that the cost goes up when it's illegal and many other people get hurt in the consequence because it's an illegal thing, so you're not supposed to be doing it. And that's why when I was a kid, you know, pot was everywhere, still now, but my friends had it and they hated the police and they wanted to stay away from law enforcement, et cetera, because they might have just a little bit of pot and they didn't want to have their record blemished. So these are the things that one has to look at. The thing is that, like yesterday, after I got the call about the M1 buildings in Newberry Park by the city service center, I went there and my first reaction was, how great, I mean, we are going to get some good size industries in our city, wonderful, good jobs coming here. But then I kept driving and then I looked, and I know the history of the city for the last 30 years or at least, not 60, and Northrop closed for 10 years, that big M1 was lay empty, nobody wanted, because people, they're not building these kind of things in our country, especially in California. And so, and so the city council did a good thing and divided that lot into nine buildings. And even in the nine buildings, when they are smaller and they are subdivided too, they are not being, they're not rentable. Racing place, M3 took one of them and is successful at it, I guess. So, and then I went out to Corporate Drive where there was going to be an indoor swap meet. That was a use that the council thought was not good for a great city. So now marijuana cultivation or sale, I don't know which one it is, I haven't kept up with it, is that, is fine in an industrial zone. So I think more thought needs to be given to this, and it should be done in such a way that it would not impact other places. I don't have much to say on pot, but I will say it, I mean, one of the biggest problems now is the prescription opiates, as you all know. And unfortunately, I've had experience with it now, and these people have no incentive to give you the least amount of drugs or medicines that you need. And the doctor that prescribed the opiate to my family member did not have any method, any training, anything to get her off the medicines. I've had some back problems myself and I took a medicine and I was feeling dizzy and all that, so I told the nurse, it's very bad, too strong. So guess what? They gave me Lyrica, you see the TV ads of Lyrica or Lyrica, whatever it is, it's not, it's just the opposite of what is required. So don't think that these doctors are very wonderful people.
We go back now to staff, are there any additional comments, Mr. Ware?
Thank you, Chair Newman. The only thing I would add, just in response to some of the comments, would be in regards to the number, although not specifically within the purview, the council did talk about their desire to take incremental steps in this, and that was reflected in this initiation. And that, you know, I think, I think it's definitely, it's definitely a subject matter they're aware of, and like I said, in reflection of their initiation, this is what it is as we sit here today. Also, in regards to the potential, I think, some of the questions Commissioner Pletcher moved forward with as far as other potential zones, commercial zones, the way our commercial zones are set up now, much of our C2 is now really not in existence with the, with the adoption of the specific plan along Thousand Oaks Boulevard, there's limited C2, C1 and some of the other zones are, or in that respect, C1s are usually generally very close to residential. And it's possible when we, when we start looking at these sensitive land uses and creating distance requirements, that a lot of that would not be available anyway. That was all factored into thoughts of moving forward with the industrial zone because I think it does present some of the larger opportunities as far as the zoning classification for these types of uses, and is also consistent with the uses that are already present in there. And unless you have other questions, that's all staff has comments on.
Thanks very much. Commissioners, any follow-up questions for staff? All right. At this point, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and open up the floor among commissioners for discussion and/or a motion. Commissioner Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to, just added a few notes here as I was going through this discussion, listening to the discussion. I tuned into TO TV the night that the city council was discussing this issue because I wanted to hear firsthand what the concerns were, not only of the city council, but also of the community. And, you know, it was a very educational process, but hearing from consultants, people that are passionate, passionate on both sides, one or the other. And the marijuana cannabis issue remains controversial and even divisive in some regards. But fortunately for us tonight, at least I feel fortunate that no one's asking for my personal opinion other than on the zoning issue. And so that's what's before us. In fact, the direction of the city council specifically said industrial zone, it didn't even ask the planning commission which zone, it just said, we want an industrial zone, which industrial zone? So that's, that's what's before us tonight. T.O. Boulevard was not even in the discussion, it was just industrial zone. So we're not going to be discussing any of the regulatory issues, although again, they remain passionate issues within the community, and I'm sure, you know, those of us on the dais here would, would have an opinion on some of that as well if we were, or if we had the opportunity to speak to that. City council also gave specific direction, one facility, that there was not going to be, again, a discussion from the planning commissions to how many, it's just one facility. So that is not for us to discuss either. So really just comes down to the zone, and that's the only thing that we're discussing tonight. And I even noticed Mr. Kidway referred to the email we received from Ms. Robinson, again, a very passionate and personal issue regarding marijuana. Again, that's not for us to discuss. I appreciate the input and it's, again, all relevant, but I think that needs to go to the city council. So as I look at what's before us and, you know, what we have at our disposal and what to decide, it's really just which zone, and I think it's very clear to me that the M1 zone would be the appropriate industrial zone, so I would certainly support that. And I would like to make a motion to go ahead and approve staff's recommendation to recommend to the city council that we move forward with the M1 zone, and this would be for municipal code amendment, MCA. code amendment MCA 2017-70260. And to give that recommendation to the city council.
Thank you Commissioner Nichols. Commissioner Pletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Certainly want to echo many of the comments made by Commissioner Nichols as to the reasons behind his support of the, of the motion here tonight. I think the largest concerns are certainly outside of our purview. The distance separation requirements and sensitive land uses, when you look at the M1 map, there are near some sensitive land uses, some schools, some residential areas, but, you know, that will all be addressed in time. You know, council has directed a very limited question to us tonight and I think we're going to fully answer it. Mr. Ware's report is very thorough and laid out the reasons that why an M1 zone is appropriate over the M2 zone. So I also will be supporting the motion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Pletcher. Commissioner McMahon?
Yes, I came down to City Hall when the city was having the workshop because I wanted some background. I wanted to know what the population, our citizens were thinking. I wanted to hear the consultant. And it was really enlightening to see how many of this community were in favor of the medical marijuana. And so that's, that's what the city council heard and that's what they've done. And so they feel it's a good, a good place to put in the M1 and I tend to agree, so I will support the motion.
Thank you. Are there any other commissioner comments? All right then, I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and set up a vote, please. Please vote.
Motion passed, 4-0.
All right, thank you. As this is a recommendation to city council and not a vote on an action, this is not an appealable vote. This goes next to the city council for action. So we move on now to Community Development Department reports and referrals. Mr. Gilli?
Yes, like to, looking at the tentative agenda for the commission, you'll see that we have items scheduled for both meetings in December, but at this point, we don't have anything for either of the meetings in November. While neither of the November meetings are officially canceled at this point, there's a high likelihood that they will be. So just free to be aware of. Also, the December 11th meeting has an item that is about a wireless communications facility. And I just wanted to let the planning commission know if they hadn't already heard that SB 649 was vetoed. So that bill will not have an impact on our review of that item. With that, I'm just available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gilli. Are there any questions of staff? All right, we move on to minutes and resolutions. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes and resolutions from our meeting of September 11th? Commissioner Pletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt both the minutes and resolutions from the planning commission meeting of September 11th, 2017, in full.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Will the clerk please prepare us for a vote on minutes and resolutions?
Motion passed, 4-0.
All right, thank you. We move to AB 1234 reports. Do we have any commissioner reports of outside activity? And we'll wrap up with commission comments. Commissioners, any comments? Commissioner Pletcher?
Well, it's already been well established on the SB 649. I was very happy to see that actually get vetoed. But I did want to take a second to read just a bit of what the governor actually said in his, in his statement. Because I feel like it's, it's important to where he kind of stands on cities in certain regard. He says, there's something of real value in having process that results in extending the, this innovative technology rapidly and efficiently. Nevertheless, I believe that the interests which localities have in managing rights, in managing rights of way requires a more balanced solution than the one achieved in this bill. And I think that statement's very important because I hope, like most bills, they end up back in front of the senate or the assembly the following year and the following year. And I really hope that the drafters of the bill take that to heart and seek a much more balanced solution, one that completely wouldn't strip localities of, you know, such as Thousand Oaks from being able to, you know, have any say in the matter. At the same time though, I really would hope that technology, the companies, the wireless facilities and the technology companies would take it upon themselves to see if they can redesign some of their facilities to not be so, you know, obtrusive and obvious when they are on the side of the road or when they are throughout our city. Because perhaps between the two, if both sides would work on that, we could certainly find a more balanced resolution that cities could support. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Saturday, I quickly stopped by for what I thought was only going to be a trail workday at Sapley Trails, only to find out that it was a groundbreaking ceremony. And I received notification from the Canoe Open Space Foundation because I'm passionate about open space and actually contribute to the organization, so I get email updates. So while I was happy to be able to witness that, surprisingly as it was, it was only for a few months, I just happened to get there at the right time, I was equally disappointed that I did not hear about it from the city staff that the event was taking place. And I recognized that perhaps not as being an elected official, that, you know, we're not necessarily in a position to be recognized in that type of arena. However, and this is where I wanted to kind of tie this into some other comments I made in the past, this body had a critical role in that parks moving forward. And we spent time in the field, spent time with park district staff and reviewed that here at this dais to review and got some good input from the community as well as going through the process. And we do this time and again with many projects. And we see them on renderings and pieces of paper and ideas and concepts, but rare is it that we ever get to see the final real deal and see, gosh, did it look anything like what I thought it was on a piece of paper in the renderings? And I know we have other projects around town where we have been a part of that process and we never hear about its ultimate destination. Sometimes it may not be built, other times it's built and becomes a wonderful project. But we're never on the back end of that. And I see it as an opportunity, use it as a case study, that it would improve our role here and improve our jobs if we could see the finished project, say, did that look anything like I thought it did when I was reviewing it? Or gosh, next time I got to remember that because that's not quite the way I thought it was going to turn out. And so to have that opportunity to see that whether, doesn't necessarily have to be a groundbreaking or a grand opening ceremony, but just to see the final product when it's through, I think would do wonders for this, for this body and for the organization as a whole. So if there's some way that we could be on receiving end of some notification that these things are happening, you know, just for our personal benefit, I recognize, like I said, sometimes it's really just for the dignitaries and just for their presence, which is entirely appropriate for elected officials. But I believe there are some instances where it would be worthwhile for this group to be present. And if they so choose to recognize, well be it. But that's not my intent. My intent is to learn from the process. Secondly, while I'm on the topic of notifications, I realize also in going through the AB 1234, 1234 reports, I don't get any notifications of training opportunities. American Planning Association conferences, League of City conferences, I've never received those notifications. And I'm not quite sure if it's incumbent upon us as individuals to pursue these on our own and to just let staff know, because those things aren't coming at me because I'm not in the planning profession on my day job. And I think it would behoove the city to pass along that information and let us know things that might be of interest. I know there has been some things such as the commissioners' training sessions, but these are things that could happen on a yearly basis. And if we could start getting some emails and notifications of that or copies of, you know, hard copies, whatever it is, that would be nice. But, you know, I haven't been anything for a couple of years because I usually find out about it after the fact. And I wish I could go and I would like to go, but I just don't hear about it in a timely fashion. And then lastly, I had in my notes here before Mr. Kidway mentioned it, the development activity list. I know we have had some hard copies early on, but in the recent years, it's been just a online version. And we had requested that to be notified to the planning commission. I remember receiving it once and that's all. And we still don't get that notification that that's available. And I'm not quite sure what it's going to take to get that information. But again, that's something that I think this body should be provided so we can refer to that to see what's happening around the city. So again, all those are kind of notification related for various reasons. And if there's something I need to do personally, I would appreciate it. Just let me know if I need to take some action to, to, you know, do my own homework to get this done. That'd be great if, if there's some other way to get that done, I'd appreciate it. But if that could be made available, I would greatly appreciate it.
Commissioner, if I could respond just briefly on all three points, taking them from the top, the Sapley Trails Park. I know there are a lot of motions that we pass unanimously, 5-0, 4-0. And I think in the case of the park, we would have approved it 25 to 0 if we could have. There was very strong sentiment in favor of moving forward with that, with that project, especially since it had been on the drawing board for so long. So I think it's, it's an excellent idea and very satisfying in the case of this park to go see the completed product. It's easy for me, I live across the street from it, so it's very nice to see that taking shape. But I think what, I want to support what you're saying, not just for the projects we support, but also for projects we may not support, to go back and see, they may turn out to be much better than we thought they were, or perhaps much worse. But either way, I think the point you're making about having a connection between seeing the plans on paper, studying the applications and the finished product is a really important one. And I think it's a well, well-made point that we need to have more of that connection between what we do here and what happens in our community. Moving on to notifications, I don't know if I signed up for it, but the APA does have a mailing list. I don't know if the city put me on it or I put it on it, but I get several emails per week about different events and training sessions and other kinds of activities APA is having. So that's one resource that might be useful for you. There may be, there may be other planning mailing lists as well. But APA certainly does a lot to publicize what they're doing. And then on the third report, on development activity reports, you're right, they're not included, they've never been included in our packets as far as I've been on the commission. I don't think this is out of some nefarious plot to hide them from the public. I checked and they are posted on the website on the first or second day, first business day certainly of each month, on the city's website. I've been trying the past few months to tweet on my, on my Twitter feed, to tweet a link to that report and also on my commissioners' Facebook page as well. So for the 37 people that see that, that's useful. As commissioners, I think it would be useful to, for staff to include that in our packets as well. Because we do, after all, in every meeting, have commission report, or staff reports, rather, and we also have a commissioner comment period. And if there is something that's outside the regular agenda items, this would be a good opportunity to bring that up. So I'm in agreement both with what you're saying about it'd be nice for us to see it as part of our, our work as commissioners and also to satisfy the public that there's not some secret plot to hide the, the development activity report. There's not. It is out there. It is on the city's website. But, you know, sunshine is a good disinfectant. Showing that, that report as widely as possible to as wide an audience as possible is a good thing, in my opinion. So I'm glad you brought this up. Okay, are there any other questions? Commissioner Pletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as a quick comment response to the AB 1234 reports, I think also just a prevailing question, maybe city staff certainly has the answer to and can help us answer, is what associations or what groups or what conferences, what is the, you know, I assume there's some kind of approved list of ones we can and cannot go to and what's beneficial for us and not. I know at least when Commissioner McMahon and I went to the academy at the beginning of the year, you know, I know that, that was at least one that we could check off. I know there's a number. It'd be nice to just maybe have a list or dates or something just to, you know, further the point that Commissioner Nichols was trying to make, just to make sure that we're finding association meetings that we can go to. And then just my other quick point is just some positive news for the bikers of the commission. City staff and myself, and we began meeting with a few bike share vendors that have reached out to the city as far as just wanting to come in and show us their technology and show us what's, what's, what they have to offer the city. And we're continuing to meet with some of the community leaders who would have a good stake and interest in it. And I know city staff is busy kind of going headfirst into the issue, Public Works and Kathy are. So we're making nice progress and hopefully by the beginning of the year, we'll have a little bit more information. I know they're really looking at the city of Seattle right now. That's kind of a big point because they did, made some moves at the city level to allow some of these companies in to park their bikes in some public rights of way. And they're kind of going to check in at the beginning of the year to see how that turned out. And I think it's going to be a nice little guiding point for how we as a city can approach the bike share issue. So we're making some headway, making some progress. I'm certainly happy about it. I think, still think it's a great idea as council deals with much larger issues tomorrow with the Measure E. But traffic always remains, remains an issue and this is a good way to solve, you know, good practical step in the right of direction of solving some of these traffic issues. But thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as a follow-up, Mr. Pletcher mentioned the Measure E discussion tomorrow night. I just wanted to commend our deputy community development director here for putting that report together. It must have been quite the learning process, being fairly new to the city, but I thought the report was well done and look forward to the heartfelt discussion tomorrow.
Mr. Gilli?
Wanted to comment on, on, on the topics raised about the notification. Not necessarily in any order. We are internally actively looking at training opportunities for, for the commission, whether they're seminars or conferences. We're actively looking at that for 2018. So we're going to, we are going to be having more information coming forward on that, most likely at one of the, of the hearings we have in December. So that we can kind of project out what, what will, the schedule in 2018 will be. As for the other topics, we will definitely look into that. I agree that following up on I agree that following up on the results of the items that you see is, is extremely important. And so we will be actively looking into that also for 2018. And we'll also look into ways to make sure that it's, it's clear that, that our activity report is being updated. Are there other commissioners who would like to see it as part of, of their digital packet? Because that's not a, that's, that's not difficult for us. Yes. Okay, that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner, Mr. Gilli, I appreciate it. And thank you, commissioners. With that, we are adjourned to November 13th, possibly later, possibly December. Good evening, Thousand Oaks.